Morning. Good morning, Hatfield. Welcome to the August fourteenth meeting at Memorial Town Hall. We have a few items going on today. Basically, it's with the DPW Director's Contract has been set. Lions Club, we're looking for a liquor license for a fundraiser over there. We do have a contract with Wilcox Builders to replace windows in Town Hall, out in the front portion, and a few other items from Town Administrator. And so anyways, we'll get on with it. Is anybody here for -- or do we have any public announcements first? I have one thing. It's been brought to my attention by a few people in town that they feel that we bought a mower. We didn't buy a mower. They were irate, number one, we can't buy a mower. Didn't go to Town Floor. The mower is actually owned by Western Mass Electric Company. We finally got involved with it. I've been trying to get this done for quite a few years, and they finally had an opening, so the Town of Hatfield has joined in with five other towns. And what it is, is we get to use the mower for a set number of weeks. Part of the deal is we mow under the lines, around corners. We try to trim it like a hedge along the roadways. For the electric company, if their wires come down, it's easier to pick them up, and instead of fighting through brush to get them. And the other thing, the town gets to use the machine to do their own work, too. So it's a good deal. I think it's like $500 per year, and that basically pays for the maintenance of the machine. And then after five years, the town will actually own the machine. So it is, it's not a bad deal. So anyways, we don't own it, so you know, you can rest. Okay, do we have any community form? Go ahead.
Please.
Sure.
My name is Kathy Gow. Can I just sit up like this, or did it work well enough? I'm from Depot Road. I'm here speaking as a member of the Hatfield Historical Society and as curator of the Hatfield Historical Museum. It's come to my attention that one of the agenda items that will be talked about today is about Town Hall renovation and exploring different places that could be used for offices. And I guess one of the options that's on the table is the possibility of reassigning the rooms that are on the second floor of the Town Hall, you know, often called the community rooms, or the one community room, one parlor room, as a possible place for offices. So many of us are here today from the Historical Society and the Historical Commission because those rooms, it was either last summer or the summer before, was voted by the Select Board to have those rooms be assigned to the Historical Museum as its new home, because we've been in desperate need of a new home for a long time. And ever since then, we've basically been trying to get some second-floor access, handicapped access to the second floor. So we're basically here to try to get that option off the table, so that the second-floor rooms go back to being used by the Historical Museum. And I would just like to kind of point out two things. You know, when votes are made for planning purposes or whatever, then people move forward with that understanding. And so, for instance, the elevator that's, you know, that is planned to go into the Town Hall at the moment and being designed, that has been funded, I think mostly from community preservation funds. And last January, our DPW Director, Phil Genovese, sent me an email saying that he'd gotten an email from the Chair of the Community Preservation Commission, Bob Wagner, saying that the application didn't have enough information, enough support. And one of the things that the application needed was support from, you know, would help the application would be to have support from the Historical Society and the Historical Commission. The email that I received said, you know, "The CPA has asked for some more details, as stated, and the elevator project request is for access to the top floor, which was voted to house a historic collection." And then from Bob Wagner's email to the DPW Department, you know, he was saying that the application needs the following items, one of them being the brief description provided in the application noted that the elevator will provide access to the town's Historical Museum to be located on the second floor of Town Hall. So, you know, many things have been presupposed for the museum going up there, and it is, while, one of the reasons that we need a home for the museum is when the library plan gets funded, they, you know, there won't be space for the museum there, and the museum will need to be housed somewhere safely by the town, which owns the collection. But one of the things, last fall, when we had the special meeting for the $25,000 to support the redesign of the library's plan, basically making it smaller and more affordable with the museum not being part of the plan, that also presupposed that the museum would be moving over to the second floor of the Town Hall. It's not something that is just a nice idea. That space is woefully inadequate for a historical collection, because it has slit windows, there's no way to reliably get air conditioning in there. The week that I wrote this letter, it had been 39 degrees up in the museum in January. This week, the last month, I don't know how many days, have been 90-plus degrees up there. This is not an environment that is really responsible for holding a historical collection that includes deeds and letters and, you know, fabrics and textiles and things from the 1700s, in some cases, the late 1600s. We have a very, you know, important collection, and it needs to be housed somewhere safely. And we are all very thankful to have the Select Board make this vote. It was either last summer or the summer before, that the space should be allotted to the museum, and we would like to have this idea of considering those spaces now for offices, which I presumably can only be considered because we're talking about putting the elevator in, and the elevator got its funding, at least in some measure, because the museum was going up there. So, thank you very much.
We will be discussing that later in the meeting, so.
Go ahead.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Rick Martin, Straits Road. I'm co-chair of the Historical Commission, so, and I will just briefly say that, you know, the Commission is in, you know, agreement with basically everything that Kathy just said to you. You know, from my understanding, you know, we have a very rich collection. It does need to go somewhere. And should there be no provisions made in the Dickinson Memorial Building, we do need a safe, environmentally controlled area to place the collections. And from my understanding, it sounds like the rooms upstairs, that's already in the bucket to go, you know? You know, 21st century, I mean, it takes a lot more money to preserve collections and, you know, preserve our rich history. So, like I say, I would just briefly say that I, you know, am in support of the current plans that are in the pipeline. Thank you, gentlemen.
If not, we'll move on. Next on the agenda are minutes.
Motion to approve Board of Selectmen Minutes of 24 July 2012.
I second that motion.
Motion made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I would like to go back under whole business, the Center School Charter, the Town Hall ramp, the ambulance hardship criteria, and the police contract language. These are some of the actions that were in here in this minute.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, on this, are we going to refer this to the Council on Aging Board?
Right, right. Next on the agenda is the Highland Valley Elder Services. Each month, and from September through June, I believe it is, they have a monthly meeting. It's the first Tuesday of every month. And I have been on the board, however, I'm not considered a member of the Board of Directors only because I'm not a member of the Council on Aging, so I'm going to talk, you know, to them to see if they can get somebody on that committee, because it is very informative, plus they can make decisions for the Town of Hatfield where I can't, so I will, we can get back on that.
What Mr. Dempsey is talking about is the Highland Valley Elder Services Board of Directors, and he's proposing that we have our representative come from the Hatfield Council on Aging, so they could be a full representative and actively participate.
Okay, Lions Club. We have a Rotary Club of Amherst applying for a three-day liquor license, which is basically one day.
Motion to approve application for a three-day liquor license for the Rotary Club of Amherst for the Lions Club Pavilion on September ninth, from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m.
Second that motion.
Okay, motion made, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that is a fundraiser, it's a benefit bike ride, so. All right. Contract with Wilcox Builders. Paul, if you want to.
Yes. This is the contract for window replacement in the Town Hall. The Board has already awarded the contract to Wilcox Builders several weeks back. This is merely the construction contract, which has been already signed by Town Council and the Town Accountant, so we just need signatures on this contract. And actually, Selectman Boyle has already signed it.
What's the start date and finish date?
We don't have a start date, but we have a finish date of September 30th.
I know, according to them, the windows have been ordered already, just waiting from the Command.
They, the windows should be in any day now.
Yeah, I think Phil ordered those quite a while ago, actually.
Yeah, yeah, they were, they were ordered about a month ago, and it's been about a month, so.
Okay.
Okay, next, DPW Director Contract. Would anybody like to speak on it? Basically, all we did, we sat down with Mr. Genovese after our last meeting, and we did decide to give Mr. Genovese a 2% raise. We didn't up his salary at all, we just gave him across the board 2%. So, anybody want to make a motion?
Well, have we now included the language?
Yes.
On the benefits?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, because I, I don't, this was discussed at the last executive session meeting, so it needs to be voted on now.
Okay, I move to approve the employment contract with the Director DPW for the period one, a three-year period, beginning one July 2012 and ending 30 June 2015.
I'll second that. Okay, motion made, seconded. Any discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In addition to that, I've also got the employment contract for the Police Chief, which has already been approved, but in making some editing changes to it, last time around, I inadvertently omitted some language, which was caught at the last meeting. So I've made that correction, so this will require signatures as well.
We didn't hear anything from the Attorney General's Office, did we, yet?
No, no, we have not.
According to the package, we do, we did receive just about everything but that from them.
Well.
Well, on the articles that we had.
But what about the police? We did, there was nothing in there that went?
I thought we were asking them to approve the extension.
That'll be special legislation.
Right.
And we.
So, we didn't hear any, that's what I'm saying, we didn't hear nothing back from them.
No, we have not.
Okay.
Okay.
I would expect to hear that from Mr. CoCot.
Right, right, yeah. Special legislation doesn't happen overnight.
No. That's why we started early.
He'll be on his next contract.
Yeah.
Yeah, right. It has to be done before February.
That's true.
What we're talking about is, we requested special legislation to permit Mr. Oslie to continue as Chief of Police beyond the otherwise mandatory retirement age next February.
Next is the Open Space Committee. Anybody here from Open Space?
Yeah, I had them scheduled for 9:30. It's now 9:20, so I imagine they'll, they'll be here shortly.
Take the next order of business.
I am here from the Open Space, but I'm not, I'm not prepared for the presentation at this point. I was going to be here to, you know, support. I'm sure they are either.
All right, we'll take, we'll come back to it. Why don't we go with, I think Louise was going to come in to talk about Treasury Clerk, so why don't we go to Paul, your report?
Well, the only thing on my agenda is to talk about the Town Hall renovation. And I think we need to, that's going to take some time.
Okay, that's all you have, then? All right.
We can skip down to ambulance?
Yeah.
Yep. Go ahead.
We had a discussion, and Paul and I think Ed met with Coastal, who serves as our agent in billing for ambulance services. And one of the things we had been talking about was pursuing beyond their effort, i.e. essentially turning things over to a collection agency for those bills that were, to be abated that were not related to, say Medicare, what the Medicare reimbursement rate is, someone's just not paying. And one of the questions was whether that was going to be a charge to the town.
Right.
And the answer was?
We were supposed to get a copy from the assessors, and I'm not sure if we did that yet, from the assessors on what the guidelines were, to get an exemption for hardship case and stuff like that.
Yeah.
And so I'm not sure where we stand with that, Paul.
The hardship criteria, there's supposed to be some hardship criteria, that's a separate thing.
That's a separate thing.
But was there, isn't there a charge?
There is not.
Oh, okay.
There is not.
So essentially, the collection agency acts just like Coastal.
Just like Coastal.
Only they'll take a percentage of whatever.
They get a percentage of whatever they collect, so.
It doesn't cost us anything, it comes out of what the process.
Okay, so then, do we need to change our contract?
No.
With them?
No.
They'll do it, you just tell them?
We would just need to inform Coastal that we want to employ the services of a collection agency, and they'll, and they'll put it in motion.
Okay. I ask that because, you know, one other thing we had talked about earlier was simply taking folks to small claims court. But as Bill O'Neill has pointed out, there's significant, can be a lot of administrative effort required. This would require none on our part, simply turn it over and let them get what they can and take their fee.
Yeah, I mean, small claims, I mean, there is, there is a fee involved.
There's also the issue of trying to collect after you even get a judgment, I've been there, done that.
Yeah, there's a fee involved. Typically, it's, and, you know, Town Hall employees' staff time, you have to, you know, show up in court. It's typically the tax collector who would have to, you know, appear before the magistrate, so, you know.
I would move that we amend our contract with Coastal, or whatever arrangement is needed.
If we need to, yeah.
To pursue use of a collection agency for.
Yeah, that's my recommendation.
I'll move that up to Paul to take care of.
Okay.
Okay.
Also, Paul, we should have a sheet that gives a description of if somebody's looking for a, for a, an exemption, hardship exemption, we should have a sheet outlining what's needed for the exemption, like a form, and they fill it out, and I'm pretty sure Jenny has one, we could almost model the assessors.
Yeah.
And that way, they, we have some documentation that shows why we're giving them an exemption.
Yeah, there, I'm looking at the Mass Municipal Association website. I found a site there that has policies from different communities. I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, but I'm going to, I'm going to take a look at that and, you know, see what I can come up with.
Okay. All right, let's go back to, is everybody here from the Open Space Committee? That's, that wants to be here, that's. All right, why don't you, if you'd like to come up and?
Whoever's going to speak would probably come up here at the mic. Or both of you. Fine. Peter, get it more up to the, your shirt up there.
I have a couple of handouts.
Well, Mark is passing those out. Can I ask one question? Have we paid our dues?
Paid our dues?
Right. Payment, we had a payment due in July.
For?
This.
For what?
Regional Conservation Agent.
Oh, as far as I know, yes.
Okay.
What, Peter?
What, Peter?
Peter's going to start.
I'm going to start, uh. We wanted to meet with Board of Selectmen just to have a discussion about two things. One of those is the Terry Blunt Memorial and what the situation is with that. And I'll say something to fill in for people who don't know, really don't know too much about it, I'll just say something about it in a second. So that was the first item of business. And the second was the question of conservation and how the Regional Conservation Agent job is going to affect us and how we can actually make use of the RCA's, the RCA's skills and so on. So first of all, I thought what I would do is to talk a little bit about the inauguration of the Terry Blunt Memorial. I think everyone knows that we've been working on this for quite a while, which is to have a Terry Blunt Memorial watershed up in West, up in West Hatfield. And we fundamentally, what we wanted to do was to provide something that is a permanent memorial to Terry Blunt's work that he did both in the town here and also in the Connecticut Valley as a whole, in the region. And he did really extraordinary work with that, yes.
Could you just identify for people who don't know who is Terry? Who don't know that person?
I will. Terry was someone who worked with the Valley Land Fund that was incorporated, is now incorporated in the Kestrel Fund. But he was someone who worked both professionally and also on a volunteer basis, gave unstintingly of his knowledge on conservation, land conservation questions. And he lived up in West Hatfield, on Lindsay Road, and had a very special interest in that particular area, but in the area, in the issue of conservation as a whole, everywhere in Hatfield. So he was someone both involved professionally and also on a volunteer basis. And as I say, he was, for us, for example, in the Open Space Committee, he was absolutely vital, of vital importance, because he had a huge, he had a huge fund of knowledge, apart from anything else. And he, as I said, he really gave unstintingly of that information for us and really helped us out.
I can, Peter, that he did, in terms of specifics for Hatfield, he was responsible for taking a lot of the land that was in the reservoir watershed area and grouping it together and getting a conservation restriction, which is a deed restriction, on all of the land or a lot of the land surrounding the watershed on the books. And that deed restriction is held by the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, the Department of Environmental Management. So that actually protects the land in perpetuity. So he was, he also worked for Department of Environmental Management. That was his main job, that was his day job. So he was responsible for protecting land throughout the valley and pretty much a responsible, one of the responsible people for establishing the Connecticut River Greenway Project and the land conservation included in that. So not only in the valley, but in Hatfield specifically.
He was an enormously patient person. That was one thing I remember about Terry, extraordinary. So, yes.
We need you guys to speak up a little bit, we're having a hard time.
Sorry, yeah. It gets lost. I was just sitting, I was trying, yes, I'll try and do that. So the Open Space Committee decided that what we wanted to do was to have, as I say, an enduring memorial for Terry. And this really was comprised of a couple of things. One of them was to put a memorial plaque at a suitable place in West Hatfield, and the place we chose is right actually at the junction, pretty much, of Mountain Road and Reservoir Road. And putting a plaque there that would actually look out on a piece of land that Terry worked very hard on, to produce as, I think it's, is it an APR? I forget how, what the farm, the tree farm is.
Forest Legacy.
Forest Legacy land. And so he worked very hard on this, and we thought it would be very nice to have a bronze plaque set on a boulder there at the edge of the woods, looking out essentially and drawing people into a landscape which he had done much to maintain. It's also a beautiful piece of land, I think, there. For those of you, I think almost every one of us has walked up Mountain Road and walked along by the tree farm there. So.
There is a map on your handouts for the Selectmen. You can see there's a circle in the upper, kind of the upper center of the map, and that's where we're proposing for the memorial to be, which is on the corner of town-owned property, but looking out over, up towards Chestnut Mountain. Sorry, can you hear? Looking up towards Chestnut Mountain, overland that the Christmas, or the tree farm that he helped preserve.
So that's, that's one of the things that we want to establish. The other thing is to put what is going to be an informational kiosk that actually would be down at the, virtually at the junction of Rocks and Reservoir Road. And this would be a sign that would really talk about the area and be an informational sign for those people who were walking there. What we've done thus far is the Kestrel, the Kestrel Trust donated $1,700 for us, which is going to cover a chunk of this. We'll have to raise a little more money, but the $1,700 is going to cover what would be moving, moving the boulder there to, at the, for the plaque up near the tree farm. And it will pay for someone who is going to do the inscription, play for the plaque, sorry, and also someone who is going then to lay the plaque into.
Are you gonna talk to the trail at all?
Yes, I can talk to that, too. The trail, we are, we are going ahead with the trail. We've been out a couple of times, and we've been out with Pete Westover and Dick O'Brien, who are working with us on this. And we have, we've been out GPS-ing the trail and getting it established exactly where we think it's gonna be. One of the things we have to do, which we haven't done yet, is to survey all the private property around the edge of that, to make sure that we are within the limits of where we can have the trail. But, yeah, we've been out, actually, we were out there last week and going over it and making the GPS map for it.
Has Ms. Capra completed her work?
Ann Capra?
Yes.
Yeah, she's been, she's been helping out with this, and she's also been an active member since she actually lives in Hatfield. So, she's been of help with this, yeah.
With the Regional Conservation Agent, which is, well, is another topic, but Ann Capra will be involved in helping the Open Space Committee on behalf of the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, so she will be there during this time.
Okay, I understood that she was doing some preliminary work on the trail to make sure, to delimit where there were restrictions that would prohibit the trail.
She, she did, and she did most of the basic work on the, on the conservation restrictions, looked them up and so on. So, we had work, quite a lot of contribution from her at the beginning of the project.
Okay, so this reflects that, okay.
Yeah.
I mean, for those in the audience, the trail that we're proposing start, is a loop trail that starts right at the entrance to the reservoir, at the gate on the southern eight, southern gate, right off Rocks Road and Lindsay Road. And it would make a loop in town-owned land and then return to Reservoir Road about a half a mile to the north, to the north, and then you could, so you could make that loop run.
Okay, great. Is there a schedule?
Well, we have, we have, it was a CPA question that was passed, and we do have a year since the CPA question is passed in order to access the funds, so we're moving right ahead. We've already, like you said, we've already done two preliminary walks of the trail, so now we have, it's really getting the volunteers, because this is all gonna be done by volunteers, to actually clear and make the hiking trail a reality, so. We've also had a meeting with the Water Commissioner, Tony Ostowski. And so, we're going, we're working, we're gonna be working closely with Tony as to how this, this trail goes and, and all the access issues and the rules and regulation issues that we can also bring to the board when that's kind of in a finalized proposal.
And if folks would like to help volunteer to support this work, they should contact...
Either of us, yeah.
Try to give you an opening.
That's Mark Gilat and Peter Rackelworth.
Peter Cox.
Peter Cox, rather, I'm sorry.
Yeah, have, have lompers, little travelers, that's what it's gonna be. So, I don't know if machetes are allowed or not, but we're gonna need a lot of that, so.
Okay, what else do you have?
Do you wanna say something about this?
The Regional Conservation Agent is the other thing on the agenda. And the Regional Conservation Agent was a proposal by the Pioneer Valley Planning Commission to help small towns really, who don't have any budget for conservation, or groups like us, Open Space Committee doesn't really have a budget. The Conservation Commission has a budget, but they're very busy working on projects and permitting projects. So, in terms of a group, a town committee associated with conservation, there's really no budgeting for that. So, when we try to go out for grants or, or make something happen, it's all volunteer time. Pioneer Valley Planning Commission proposed a conservation agent, which would be an expert that would help committees like ours apply for grants, and also with expertise, if, if there was a landowner, say, willing to donate land, or if it was a priority that land needed to be purchased for whatever reason, in the watershed, for instance, this, this expert could help us make that happen, whether it's legal issues or land issues or tax issues, this person would be able to help us out. So, they, PVPC, Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, was able to get a grant, and for this next year, we're gonna have the services of a conservation agent, an expert, who will be able to give us quite a few hours, and we've got a list of priorities in order for him to work on. And so, that's going forward for the next year until next June, at no cost to the town of Hatfield. Following that, we'll be able to access those services for a fee, and we don't know exactly what that hourly rate will be, but depending upon what other grants come the way of PVPC, hopefully that hourly rate will be reasonable and we'll be able to go in future years and take, and have access to that, that expert. So, and we'll be coming back to the Board of Selectmen and, I guess, briefing you on how the first year went and see if we can get support for future years. The Conservation Commission has pledged $1,500 towards next year's dues, so that gets us, that gets us going for next year, although that's a limited number of hours, I believe, 20 hours or something like that for next year. But that will help us, at least in next year.
So, it'll be next year that this is all gonna...
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
I guess I misread this.
I know the Conservation Commission was looking forward to meeting the agent and sitting down with him.
Yeah, if the Conservation Commission has priorities, then they should, they should really talk to Ann Capra at PVPC, because she's the one who's in charge. I remember that it was brought up at a couple of Conservation Commission meetings that this would be available, but...
Have you worked out your relationship with the Conservation Commission on this? Because the Compact assigns this whole activity to the Conservation Commission, not Open Space, it assigns it to the Conservation Commission.
Right, right.
So, have...
So, we haven't really worked out any formal, you know, communication...
I realize you and Bo Wagner are very much instrumental in helping get, getting this thing going for Hatfield, but...
Right, right. And to be quite honest, you know, the...
And frankly, when I trolled earlier for the Conservation Commission for their priorities, you're the only one that responded, not the Conservation Commission. So, essentially, what we answered the mail with was your set of priorities of some months back.
Right.
But there needs to be some coordination here, given that the conduit for this is through the Conservation Commission.
Well, however the Board of Selectmen wants our committee to report on things, I mean, we could report to the Conservation Commission, we could report to the Board of Selectmen, or both.
I, I just think, I'm not, I'm not worried about the reporting. I think you and the Conservation, the Open Space Committee and Conservation Commission need to come to some working understanding of how you're gonna work together on this, given that the Compact is through the Conservation Commission.
Right, right.
Yeah.
We'd be happy to do that, Jan.
Yes.
I think September 4th, we're having a meeting right downstairs.
Okay.
So, I'll talk to Womack, see if she can get ahold of you to verify it, and you can come into our meeting soon. Because I know we are interested, we had a meeting last week, and there were some issues that came up, that we certainly could use an agent to, to give us a hand, so.
Okay. I mean, that's really part of what...
Yeah.
It was established for, just to help Open Space Committees and Conservation Commissions.
And the other part of this, we're supposed to designate our primary and alternate representative to the Compact, which is another thing, maybe one from Conservation, one from Open Space...
We volunteered a member of the Open Space Committee, certainly, we would definitely wanna be...
But that's another thing, be helpful, you had that discussion with Conservation, so we could...
Right, right.
Got a question. On your priority projects here, number 12, priorities for Connecticut River waterfront land preservation and access in addition to the Connecticut River Greenway system, can you talk a little bit about that, because I'm not sure what your intentions...
Well, number 10, 11, and 12 on our list of priorities, one of them includes opportunities for Connecticut River watershed land preservation. There is a Connecticut River watershed on Greenway, and it's, and I don't know a lot about it, except that it is comprised of multiple pieces of land up and down the Connecticut River on the, on the, on the banks of the Connecticut. And it can be added to, and it can be supplemented with other lands. And so, there might be opportunities in Hatfield where a beautiful piece of Connecticut River waterfront land could be added to this Greenway project. And there may be opportunities, there may be pieces of land that are appropriate for that, and I think we can take advantage of the Conservation Agent, who may, say, call a number of landowners, see if they're interested, whether it's outright ownership by the state or whether it's out, it's a conservation restriction on that land or something that would add it to the Greenway. That's, that's kind of what we're, we're looking at.
Will there be some kind of a booklet or a brochure or something that lets the landowners know on how this all works, and if they did donate the land or whatever, what this means for them as a property owner?
Oh, I'm sure that any property owner who wants to, you know, go into an agreement regarding their land is gonna wanna know all about it. So, that's what, that's what we would facilitate, and the agent would facilitate that. Which kind of brings up a question as to how the Board feels about conservation land in general in Hatfield. Because one of the, one of the issues with conservation land is that it does take land off the tax rolls. I mean, this is something that, if the town wants to pursue conservation of certain important pieces of Hatfield's natural resources, we're gonna have to have the discussion about how that affects, you know, tax rolls, tax assessments, and just the desire for the town to kind of practice what it, what it preaches. I mean, the town did pass the Community Preservation Act. So, we think in general, there is support for conservation of land in Hatfield. I mean, this was passed by a pretty good majority. So, the question is, when you start to actually go into the practice of seeing what land and what landowners are willing to preserve land, it starts to raise other issues. And I don't know whether the Board has an opinion or a general feeling about it, or if they wanna raise issues about it, because we feel that, along with the commercial development of Hatfield and along with residential expansion, we should also pursue the preservation and conservation of some of Hatfield's most precious resources, which are its farmland, its woodlands, and its wetlands.
I think the, the most important thing is to keep the communications open and let them know exactly what they're up against, if they did, you know, cooperate and decide that, make sure all the questions are answered, don't leave them in the dark on anything, because that really, that'll, that'll be detrimental to the project down the road.
But I think Mark's question's a little different. Share my own view, I think, we ought to handle that just as we would residential development, just as we would commercial development, i.e., you handle it on an exception basis, not just blanket, go do it, but look at it, does it appear reasonable? Is it consistent with what we're trying to do?
On a case-by-case basis.
Right, as opposed to a blanket...
Well, that's, that was my point.
No, we're, we're talking about putting these restrictions, which would take land off the, off the tax base.
Yeah, yeah. And a lot of the land that we're talking about, you know, some of it, if we're talking about wetlands or forest lands, isn't heavily taxed necessarily, because it's not necessarily prime developable land, but it could become prime developable land. So, there's a potential there, but, but there is an impact, so.
Okay. Well, the other thing, too, is we've been, well, we're saving a lot of farmland from development right now. Would I consider it conservation? I would, because it'll never be built on, you know, so to me, that's, that is conservation. A lot of the farmers are going and, and applying for, for these...
APRs.
APRs, that they can go out and, and the land is there. It'll never be used for, for building or developments or anything like that, so. I, I think we're, we're moving along with conservation on, on that end.
Yeah.
As far as forest lands, I think there's some probably in there, too, so. You know, I think, personally, I think we're, we're pretty much staying with the, the uniqueness of Hatfield. We're, we're still trying to keep our open farmland and woodland and, you know...
Right, right. Well, I think we'd be, we'd be happy to come to the Board, you know, whenever opportunities arise, and that's our responsibility, is to share what we're doing with, with the Board and the rest of the town, so.
As a, as a takeaway, I'd, I'd ask if, as a result of your discussion with Conservation, if you're gonna meet with them in September, you come back with your proposals as to, or just inform us, how, what the relationship is gonna be, what the channels of communications are, and then as well, what the recommendation is for appointment as the primary and alternate representative to the Compact, so we can act on that and get that out of the way.
Yeah, I think that would be quite valuable for us to do.
And you're gonna come back at some point with a little more information on the October ceremony?
Yes, we'll keep, we'll keep in touch about it.
There'll be a lot of folks very interested in that.
Yeah, I mean, we'll be talking with Tony.
We focused on Terry's contribution here in Hatfield, but really throughout the Pioneer Valley.
Yeah, there'd be a lot, a lot of interest, I'm sure. And Phil Genovese, we've obviously had two or three conversations with him about this whole memorial idea and the, and the location and what's involved, so he's aware of it and will be helping us along.
Great, good. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll see you. All right, next on the agenda, the Treasurer Clerk's retirement. Would you like to come up, Louise? You're not retiring yet, so.
Not yet.
But I'm glad to see that you're getting things in order, so it'll be a smooth transaction for us.
You can use the regular mic.
That's okay. Well, I guess I should. What'd you put? Do you want me to read this, or just?
Well...
I suppose I could, so folks will know why we're talking about all this.
Sure.
All right. The Board of Selectmen has a letter here that I'll just read very quickly, advising them that I'm going to retire from the elected positions of Town Clerk and Treasurer effective April 1st of 2013. I've struggled with this decision for the past two years. I never really thought that I'd be ready to retire, as I thoroughly enjoyed working for the town. Over the years, implementation of new laws, regulations, and procedures has required continual education, which has kept the positions both challenging and interesting. During my 30...
All right, next on the agenda, the treasurer clerk's retirement. Would you like to come up, Louise? You're not retiring yet, so.
Not yet.
But I'm glad to see that you're getting things in order, so it'll be a smooth transaction for us. You can use the regular mic.
That's okay. Well, I guess I should. What'd you put? Do you want me to read this or just?
Well...
I suppose I could, so folks will know why we're talking about all this.
Sure.
The Board of Selectmen has a letter here that I'll just read very quickly advising them that I'm going to retire from the elected positions of Town Clerk and Treasurer effective April 1st of 2013. I've struggled with this decision for the past two years. I never really thought that I'd be ready to retire as I thoroughly enjoyed working for the town. Over the years, implementation of new laws, regulations, and procedures has required continual education, which has kept the positions both challenging and interesting. During my 36 years, the advent of technology has totally transformed the workplace here at the Town Hall. The Board of Selectmen will need to appoint a temporary treasurer and a temporary town clerk to fill the vacancies from April 1st, 2013 until the annual town elections on May 21st of 2013. Since my current term of office ends May of 2014, each position will appear on the ballot in May of 2013 to fill the one year remaining of the three-year term. To provide for a seamless transition for the town, I am willing to provide training and assistance to the interim officials and to the newly elected officials who will assume office in May of 2013. In closing, I would like to acknowledge the many dedicated officials and employees with whom I have worked over my 36 and a half years in office. It's truly been a pleasure to serve the residents of the town. So, that's why I'm here, is to talk about the transition. The Selectmen have a letter in which there are some proposals about how we should proceed. During the budget preparation for the current year, we had added additional money into the staffing account to allow for some transition periods. As it turns out, we're looking at the possibility of doing two different types of transitions. And so, I don't know if you want to talk about each one of them separately or, okay. For the treasurer's position, what I'm proposing is that the Board of Selectmen and myself join together and appoint an assistant treasurer who would work from January 1st until April 1st. And then, that same person, as long as we do this jointly, would serve as the interim treasurer who was actually appointed by the Selectmen for April 1st until the election on May 21st. If that decision is made, we could then advertise for the interim slash assistant sometime this fall and in anticipation of having that person start in January, and then that would provide you with consistency until the election in May. And do you want to discuss that one first, or?
Yeah. Well, I would, I would move to approve, adopt the proposal submitted to appoint an interim treasurer for the period, one April 2013 until the annual election on May 21st, 2013, and to advertise and initiate the hiring process in coordination with the town clerk.
Okay, so you only want to do the interim from April or?
You, I, I'm sorry, from January 1st.
Okay, so, because the person would actually be assistant treasurer from January to April and then move into interim treasurer for April to May.
Right.
Okay. And what I would propose, I'm not sure exactly that I said this in here, is that if the board is agreeable, Paul and I could just work together with advertising and interviewing and then bring forward a recommendation. We could enlist the accountant's assistant in the interview if we felt necessary, but that we could handle that and then just bring a recommendation to the board.
Great.
Okay.
And you're going to initiate the search in September?
Yes, yes. Most likely, anyone applying for that position is going to want at least a month's notice to their previous employer. Most contracts require a 30-day notice, so we'd like to get it going in the fall. And since it's a presidential year, the clerk gets pretty busy come November, so. So, for the town clerk's position, Edwina already serves as the assistant town clerk.
Motion on the...
Oh, I'm sorry, you have a motion?
I'll second that motion, yeah.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go ahead.
On the town clerk's position, Edwina Pamisano, who is currently serving as assistant town clerk, is willing to assume the clerk's duties during that interim period from April till May 21st. You already have the luxury of she's in the office and pretty much can do that. And so, that, we, that one, we would not make an appointment other than Edwina just moving up and filling in until, well, the voters would decide at the election in April, but Edwina is willing to take that position on in the interim.
Now, weren't you planning to hire someone?
I was hiring, and that's part of the money...
To support her during this period or not, or?
I was. I will still provide that backup support to Edwina in that interim period. The part of the town clerk's office that she is not as well-trained in as everything else is the election process, so I'll help her with town meeting and elections in the spring. That's not a problem. There was money in the account to add back hours that I had lost many, many years ago for support staff, and we've rearranged all those monies and decided that it would make the most sense that if additional staff is going to be hired in the clerk's office, that the new clerk should have the luxury of hiring that person. And secondly, the clerk is the office that has the most public service, and so as we look at the budgets for the new year, consideration might be giving to increasing the clerk's quote-unquote hours, as we know the elected positions serve, pretty much decide their own schedules, I guess I will say, but the funding is really there to cover roughly 20 hours a week, which will be a huge adjustment for the residents of Hatfield, because that's the office that they seek most frequently. So, there may be a decision to expand the number of hours and up the salary as opposed to hiring a person, but there'll, there'll be leeway to do that once we get through all this transition period. Next year's budget for the staff will be significantly less, but you'll have some money you can rearrange as you see fit during the next budget process.
Okay.
So, you're comfortable with the clerk?
Louise, one, one quick question.
Yes.
Is Edwina an assistant payroll clerk?
No.
I thought that's what we hired her for.
No, first of all, no. She is, it was, the position was advertised as the assistant treasurer, and I, maybe not, I'll take that back. I think originally it was advertised as support, staff, and payroll.
Yeah, yeah.
And then sometime later on, we put us, we, I think your board appoints the assistant treasurer and I appoint the assistant clerk, I think is how the law goes. And I think I came to the board several years ago to have Edwina designated as assistant treasurer, so if something should happen to me on the way to the bank, you could still function the next day. So, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions, or?
I just want to comment, we, we want to just pass over 36-plus years, you've made a major contribution to the town. I know you've held the two positions and folks think of you in those particular roles, but I think perhaps your most significant contribution has been your advice and counsel on a wide range of policy and administrative issues. And, you know, as you look back, you ought to be very proud in the years ahead.
Thank you very much.
Made things a little bit better.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Louise. Remember, she isn't done yet.
No, I'm not done yet.
Thank you, Louise.
Thank you.
All right, now, Paul, you can start on your Town Hall renovation.
Okay. This is, there's some background here for people who may not be aware, there was $200,000 approved at the last annual town meeting to proceed with some renovations on the Town Hall, which will probably not be nearly enough for what needs to be done, but it's a start. And in an effort to start moving this project forward, I thought that the best place to begin would be to solicit input from various town employees, which I did, and came up with a conceptual plan to expand new offices, create a, a meeting space over on this, this side of the room. I mean, most of the renovations would, would take place within this room, which I think most people would agree that this is really not adequate meeting space. And also, in light of the treasurer clerk who is retiring, who has been in the form of one individual for many, many years, we will most likely have two people filling those responsibilities, which will further cramp the offices in the Town Hall, which are already currently cramped. So, there were, I put a conceptual plan together with basically all, all the ideas that the Town Hall employees put forth as a means to, you know, get the discussion going. And, you know, I believe, you know, one of our next steps is to solicit requests for qualifications for an architecture, for architectural services. We need to do that sooner rather than later, but I also think that before we do that, we need to decide on the general parameters of this project. So, I, I've presented the board with a rough sketch and some, some ideas, and I'd like to hear from the board, you know, how you think we should proceed.
I'd like to respond if I could.
Go ahead.
I, I think, I think we need to think about requirements and their prioritization, number one. And number two, we've got a dollar limit. But here's my, my shot at this. Leave the, as a planning assumption, the historical society museum going on the second floor as planned. You didn't mention the elevator. Continuing with the elevator, that's not part of the $200,000 you mentioned.
No.
We understand for any build-out here, we need two ADA compliant bathrooms on this floor.
That's correct.
I would propose we essentially leave, minimize disruption, everything else, leave folks in place and essentially build out an office for the treasurer, the new treasurer position, the collector, and I'm assuming there, that would be the appropriate place for one of the bathrooms, since you have your, your plumbing there. And the town accountant, to get him out of that room and use that as a machine room. We'd build out a meeting room and do a drop ceiling. So, essentially, you're just talking about, and I, and I would defer the ramp issue from this. I would keep that, keep that apart.
Separate.
Paul's mentioned he's had some discussion with an architect who came in and just absolutely couldn't understand why the bids came in anywhere near that they came in for the ramp. And maybe we need to go back and, have we, have we ever talked to the bidders as to what, what were the key components of their cost?
I talked to one of them and, and the only comment that I got, I don't think this individual was particularly involved with the bids, but he was calling to, to get information, you know, and he mentioned something about the railing.
Well, the railing is...
I don't know. There was an architect that came in to see me, you know, looking to drum up some business last week. Boston Bay Architects, they've been hired by the COG to do renovation work on the old courthouse building, and so I used that opportunity to, to pick his brain. I talked to him about the ramp, and I asked him about, you know, the possibility of putting the ramp back here, and, and he said, "Well, they prefer to have it at the main entrance, but that is not, that's not set in stone. If you, you can come up with a reasonable plan, you can get a waiver," and particularly on a historical building, they're, they're more lenient with that sort of thing. I mean, I've, I've seen plenty of public buildings that have their access ramps not at the front of the building. And I talked to him about the cost of the ramp, you know, $183,000. I said, "Have you ever heard of a concrete ramp going in, you know, at a cost estimate of $183?" And he, well, he said, "Well, I've heard of everything, but, you know, generally speaking, it should not cost any more than $50,000." And I, I asked him, I, you know, I heard one of the things that was, that was so expensive about it was that, you know, the utilities had to be moved, and he said, "Well, you can work around that." So, I think we, I think we definitely need to get a new set of eyes in here to, to look at this project.
Well, in any event, I'd propose we set the ramp aside, focus on the immediate requirements for the first-floor build-out, and address the kinds of things I just outlined here, the two ADA bathrooms, historical upstairs, work the elevator, that's...
In the works.
The bath, the new collector moving the mic out, he'll need a new space if we make that a machine room. Just, just these basic, basic items.
Okay.
It wouldn't be much different from what we have right here. It's not going to look pretty, but we don't have much money to work with.
I mean, when, when Phil was here, and I'm not sure if Phil had any input on here, but I mean, he'd kind of agreed with what, we'd try to leave things intact. As far as putting the meeting room on the south side, we could capture the solar part, and that would keep it warmer, whereas the offices could have the lower ceiling and be more energy-efficient on the north side. That was the reason for doing that. But according to this, this layout here, it, there's a few things that just doesn't make sense. One is the bathrooms really can't...
Well, before we get to putting things to paper, can we agree on kind of what should go in here?
Well, we're limited to...
Can we agree that, can we agree that the historical folks are going to go upstairs?
I agree with that.
All right. Are you okay?
I'm, I'm fine with it. I might just, I mean, I'm fine with it, but I just want to make sure that we're thinking...
On the whole?
On a whole, okay.
I, I understand.
We do have an elevator going to the third floor. We have a set of stairs. My, my concern is, we're going to have to build something out to either keep that locked when, when, when the museum is closed, so we don't have everybody going up in there.
So, there's a door on each of the rooms, as I understand if the elevator shaft is kind of where the dumbwaiter is.
Right.
If I'm talking to Phil, the doorway would obviously be in the hall, not facing into the room. So, you would come up the elevator and the doors would still be shut and locked for the two museum rooms. You would enter into the hall and then you would go into the museum. The idea has also been, you know, if we can work this out, that once the museum is in there, that maybe during some hours that the Town Hall is open, that that room perhaps can be set up with cases, so that people who are visiting the Town Hall can also go upstairs to a room of, you know, cases that are a part of the museum that can be opened and accessible to the public. But in any case, they can go up the elevator, come out into the hall, and then it's either going to be the museum is locked or the museum is open, but that door would be to the side where the elevator comes up.
Because I'm, I know, it's been mentioned that, that be meeting, but looking at the print, if we're going to do something with a stage, that could be meeting area too.
Right, but we're not going to have enough money.
I realize it.
I'm just saying, let's parse this down to what we can get done.
Right.
Louise was mentioning, we got voting coming up here. What, what can we do in some reasonable timeframe within $200,000?
Louise, could you come up here for a minute?
Yeah.
You, you were involved in this way out.
This discussion, yes. I don't know if I've seen exactly what it looks like today, but probably...
Well, I'm, I'm just looking at the election area here. Is this, am I, am I looking at this right? Is this little...
That's the storage closet that holds all the election equipment.
Okay, that's it.
Which, which needs to be locked.
All right, so, I'm just saying, this is...
That's just a little storage.
No, it's just a store...
The election would be...
No, I know, that's what I was just...
You don't go hide in the closet to vote.
No, I mean, I didn't know, I mean, we're moving everything around here, so that's why I was kind of curious, is why is it saying elections here for...
The election would be held in the meeting room.
All right, so, the meeting room would be here.
Right, kind of a multi-purpose room.
Yeah, all right.
And that is a storage closet, which today occurred to me, now I can see Paul to share that with him. If in... If in fact, the collector's office, and I mean, these are things the architect will have to figure out, but if the collector's office is going to become a bathroom, and they don't need all the space, there's that passage door between my office and the collector's that may be, like, the right-hand side from that door to the window could be the storage area for all the election equipment. Means you have to haul it down there, but that's not really a big deal, if the front part of that is going to become a bathroom or something. But I think the key here is to recognize that come May, it is most likely I am going to become two people. And so for the clerk in particular, well, even the treasurer, both of those offices are extremely busy, April, May, June into July, with the close of school, with town meeting, with elections. So in my mind, your goal should be to have this office space, meeting rooms constructed completely by April 1st or April 15th, that then allows time to get the computers in there and get all that set up, because folks are going to need to function, and you're not going to be able to function in the middle of moving. So if you have a goal to have at least those offices ready in that meeting space, who's actually going to go in which office is something that can be figured out down the road? There's some common sense things that Paul and I had talked about, that the collector, it makes the most sense to move the collector into the current administrator's office, because that office has that significant vault in it. So the collector has a much more significant need for a vault than the administrator does, so it might make sense...
I have no need for a vault whatsoever.
Yeah, so it would make sense to, but those kinds of decisions can be made down the road, as long as the spaces are constructed. I think the key is here to decide that, yes, you can fit three offices in a meeting room and two bathrooms, and maybe they don't all get done at the same time. Maybe you don't have enough money to get the bathrooms in at step one. I don't know. I don't know anything about costing those kinds of things out, but...
Wait, I'm looking at this whole thing, and when I talked with Phil over it, we felt...
We're not deciding the layout here.
Okay.
We're deciding, what are we going to focus on? And I'm just suggesting, set aside the ramp.
You mean the ramp in the backyard?
Set aside the ramp.
Any ramp.
Yeah, that's a separate issue, separate discussion.
We can, that can be next year's project, if we have to.
What, yeah, we're going to get some more information about what the cost drivers are, how we can bring that cost down.
I mean, looking at, if you use the existing layout without touching anything, okay, and then adding on to it, okay? We looked at, Phil and I back then, Paul, you weren't here, so we looked at two offices over there, one office on the end here, and then this was the whole meeting room, okay, which we wouldn't be touching anything on the inside here, except maybe with some curtains or drapes to keep the sound from going up high. And we also talked about two new heating systems, one would, that would service the offices on that side, complete, all the way into the assessor's office and Mike's office, underneath the heating and air conditioning, and then another one set over here for this side, just for the meeting room, and an office over there. That was what we felt was comfortable for $100,000. That's what we could get in there. But that was about it. And then when I saw this plan, it's like, there's no way we're going to get this here, you know, for under $100,000, or within the $100,000 budget.
200.
200,000. Well, that's 140.
Oh. It just went down.
Well, as you will recall, that Warren article talked about renovation and providing the electrical service for the elevator, and what Phil has told me is that the cost estimate for that is 60 grand.
Yeah, the electrical was, it was 100,000, I think when we looked at it, it was right around 80 to 100,000 dollars, do the electrical, put a generator, generation system out, new panel boards, and get that squared away, so the electrical is all taken care of in the Town Hall. And then the rest would be for the build-out. I think we talked about 100,000 just for the build-out, if I recall at that time.
So can I ask a question? So aren't, are you not saying that you really were talking about three offices in a meeting space?
That's what we're talking about.
Which is what Jeff said originally, that the decision would be to add three offices in a meeting space into this area. Exactly how they're configured or what's on what side, I don't think...
Well, I'm told we have to have two bathrooms as well, for ADA.
In the bathroom, but the bathroom, one of those articles you have from last year has money for the bathrooms.
Yeah, but we were way short for the ramp also.
That was, the ramp was included.
Ramp and the bathroom.
But that's what I was saying at the last meeting, if we're not going to do the ramp, we could use some money for the bathroom.
You've got to get the approval of...
No, you don't, no, because it's in there.
It's, the article covered both the ramp and the bathroom, so we could use, we could set aside from the ramp money, what's necessary to comply with ADA for the bathrooms.
And I'd just like to make a quick comment from working in this building all these years. The heating system as it currently exists, and that won't be the right terminology for people, but the heating system is horrible in here, and there is no central air of any sort, there's no air exchange or whatever that's, it's a horrible setup in here, and so I would think that in the process of looking at where we would add offices and how you're going to provide for heat and air, that you would be looking at a solution for the whole building five years from now or whatever, and so maybe you do some cheap temporary methods the way they did these offices, through some electric heat, and I know it's expensive to run, but they don't have to be set at 70 degrees 24 hours a day, and maybe what you really ought to be looking at is an article for capital planning next year or the year after or whatever, that revamps the entire heating system in this building.
See, I don't know how you guys feel, but looking at the heating system in the building, one boiler or two boilers that we have down the basement, okay, it's just a waste of money because it costs so much, whereas if you have individual heating units, like even upstairs, you have one unit that'll take care of the whole heating, air conditioning of the historical area up there, another one with the offices below that, another one downstairs, okay, or two downstairs. You're separating it, that way if one goes out, you've still got the rest of the building heated and covered, and...
All the reasons why we proposed an overall renovation of the Town Hall, the Brinket Systems and...
But now it's going to have to be piecemeal because it's not going to happen.
Now we'll do it piecemeal, and I won't say how.
Okay, so...
Do you have an architect engaged now?
What's that?
Are you using an architect for this working?
No, we will.
We will.
We will. We're just trying to decide what it is, what our requirements are.
Something we can carry forward.
Oh, absolutely.
Mr. Chairman?
I would just like you to take notice of the amount of space you're using for a meeting right now, when you incorporate that in your plan, because we only started with 10 chairs, and if you ever expect a crowd wandering in this and to videotape it in a room like this, you need to have ample space, and lots of times that's overlooked. You know, you've got a board spread apart right now. If this was to find a meeting with 20 people, it really would be quite frankly...
Excellent point.
I want to make one other comment. I know there's a lot of people here from the historical. I think this plan says the potential of the historical, and I know the board has voted to put the historical upstairs. I have no idea what the square footage is upstairs, and I have no idea how much square footage is available over there, but I think it is at least worth a conversation about would it make more sense for the Historical Museum to be in a location on this floor as opposed to upstairs? And for a couple reasons, and it's, the intent is not to reduce the number of square feet that would be available. Is there a way to incorporate an adequate number of square footage in a location that can be separated from the building in its entirety, so for security purposes, you don't have people floating through the building, and maybe there's other ways to do that. For heating purposes, you could then heat that area separately, but maybe if it's a new system, it can be heated separately. And for accessibility purposes, it seems it would be so much simpler moving your items in and out of someplace on the first floor. So I just think it's worth a conversation, that like the historical and the selectmen and everybody involved should have about the number of footage that's needed, and whether it's worth revisiting or not.
Okay, you can come up. You can stay here. Just kind of slide, yeah, you put that on. Kathy, either one of you, whatever.
I'm not sure I have the right kind of shirt for this.
Well, share them, Mike.
So the only benefit to the Historical Museum moving to the Town Hall, I mean, there are many benefits, but we need, one, a space that's larger than the space we have, not smaller, and I don't see, especially in light of what we've just been discussing, that there would be anywhere else in Town Hall other than those two rooms upstairs that would provide us with more space than we have. I mean, you know, you've just talked about how you need a meeting space, three offices, bathrooms, you're already out of space, so you're saying, but you're saying if offices went up there, then you'd have all this space available.
I'm just saying it should be, it's worth a conversation.
Okay, but, so for us to be, we would need to be in a space that had, you know, is lockable, is able to be climate controlled, has a ceiling, of course.
Of course, a floor would be good.
Yes, and so, you know, it's not like we're picky about where the space is, as long as the Historical Museum needs can be met, but I can't see that any place on the ground floor would be available.
The second floor is comparable with those of the street floods in this town.
Exactly. You know, when the 1936 flood happened, people were housed, kind of brought to the Town Hall, and then once the bathrooms flooded on the basement and people were taken out by the side door by boat, you know, we're in the flood zone here, and there hasn't been a big flood since 1938, but in 1927, they said we could never have another one because of the changes they made, and in 1936, they said we could never have another one because of the changes that were made, and then we had one in 1938, and then I guess in 1980, 84, there was another flood. So anyway, the second floor is a much better place for many reasons because of that. And, you know, I know that the second floor, the building, obviously needs an elevator to be able to go downstairs and upstairs, but again, as a reminder, one of the prime reasons that that elevator was passed with these monies at this time is with, is because the Historical Museum was moving to that place, and the reason that the Historical Commission and the Community Preservation Commission were in big support of that is because that is an appropriate space for the museum to go into, a space that can be, that can help protect the collection, as opposed to be just another place where we kind of shove the museum.
Okay, no, I think we're all set with, with, yeah.
So would you say the selectmen are in agreement that the Historical Museum can stay in the second floor space?
It's going to stay up there, okay. Because I'm looking at, just for your information, Kathy, this is where you were supposed to go, is behind, and this was what was, somebody drew up here, is that stage would be coming out and your area would be there.
Oh, it's not coming out.
But...
Not with $140,000.
With $140,000, it isn't going to happen.
It's going to be $80,000 just to take that out, put in the floor system and get you prepared over there.
You're going to go up there, eventually, if we get money beyond this 140, well, it's 200,000, but we already went through 60,000 on the electrical, so we have $140,000 left. So I don't see us doing anything by that stage right now. So basically, what we've got to look at is, what are our best options for a few more offices for people like the accountant, the collector, possibly a bathroom, a handicap bathroom, in here with $140,000 plus whatever we have in for the ramp, if we decide to do that, so. Let's keep the, let's keep the Historical Society up top, all right? And if we ever, ever get enough money to rip this out, then we can put more offices in that area. Or a big meeting room, one or the other, because if you look at the print, this is not too much smaller than the upstairs, so.
I think that's the one key that the board needs to, you're losing essentially two meeting spaces upstairs, and so you need to replicate some meeting space, and maybe you can do that downstairs in the old fire office or something, but those rooms are used pretty frequently upstairs for meetings, and you need to replace that space.
I mean, we're looking at this meeting room right here, but we can make something work.
I just wanted to quickly point out that the architecture and the wing studing upstairs is more historically germane to the original architectural designs of this building, and would be more conducive to a Historical Museum. If you're planning on building new office space, you'd probably want to go something that would dovetail with that, but also have some more modern conveniences as well in the design and architecture of it, and want better to have a clear, open space to design something like that, rather than to try to renovate something for meeting spaces upstairs.
I think we've made up our mind that the Historical Society is going upstairs.
Yep.
Yeah, I was just trying to keep to Louise's suggestion about possibly implementing a museum somewhere else, and, you know, my thought is that the architectural design upstairs, you know, including the book club room, would be more conducive to a museum space. That's just another thought to think about.
Pat's got a question.
I just have one question, that has to do with the Historical Museum, but it more has to do with the size of the offices that you have now. Are you thinking about at least having some of the two big offices in front, like Treasurer and Cards Office, that's a big office. I've been in bigger towns and cities, and their office, like, is a third that size. I mean, can't they, can it be operated on a smaller scale and have other, another office at least in there? On most sides I'm talking about.
The two front offices?
Yes, yes.
Can certainly be looked at.
Yeah, it can be looked at, but...
With temporary petitions and so on and so forth, that you put cubicle spaces in, make it work.
Right, I mean, to me, it's like some wasted space. I don't know, but maybe just about it, but I think it is so big that...
That's why you have to look at how much space each, everybody needs.
Yes, yes, I understand that.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Can I just say one more thing, and then I'll go sit down again? So it sounds like the three of you are in agreement. Would it be possible, you know, to just kind of have any kind of a second vote or just something?
I wasn't involved, I wasn't involved with the first vote, so if you want...
I'd like to make a motion that we continuously keep the Historical Commission artifacts upstairs on the second floor after the elevator is put in.
Is that when you move?
Okay, I'll second.
Motion's been made, second.
It's on the record.
Motion's been made, second. All in favor? Aye.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Now you can go.
Thank you.
Awesome.
Well, I'm back to where I started.
Yep, we've got 140,000. Where are you going to put three offices or whatever are we going to do?
Elevator to second floor, proceed with that, two ADA compliant bathrooms, offices for treasurer, collector, town accountant. Accountant's room becomes a machine room, build out a meeting room, and plan on a drop ceiling, and consider using the ramp, some of the ramp money for those bathroom expenses to comply with ADA, and that's in the article.
I truly think that we need, because we did get some of that money from CPC, we need to get authorization from them that...
No, no, it's in, it's already...
It's in there, it's already, that one article covered both.
That one article covered.
Yeah, but it covers both, but we're not using it for the ramp.
We'll use the remainder for the ramp.
The remainder would come from, according to the article, the way it read was that that money was to be used for the ramp and also...
ADA compliance.
A handicap bathroom.
Yeah.
Right?
It was basically, it was basically...
I just read it a few weeks ago.
But there just wasn't, there's not enough.
It was basically an ADA compliance article.
Well, I mean, there may be enough to do a bathroom. If we're going to hold off on a ramp, we may be able to get one bathroom... we may be able to get one bathroom upstairs or two bathrooms, whatever.
Ziggy was supposed to, he should have been completed by now, and Phil's not here to defend himself, so I don't know where we stand with Ziggy. He was supposed to take and drop the plans of the whole Town Hall, put the elevator plan into place, and then work on this and set up a drawing in here that would be more, most feasible for the offices. And one thing I did like about your thing here, Paul, is that maybe on the end, where we had the walkway, the door going for an exit over there, we only need one exit over on that side.
Yeah, well, you can't get in either of these doors. You can only go out. So.
There's no outside handles on these doors.
There's no outside, you can only go out, you can't come in. So, that, you know, I think Mike and I are the only.
That can be rectified. That's not a problem.
Oh, it can be. But we don't need, we don't need two doors back here.
If we only need one, then you can turn that, you can put an office at the end here, but there can also be another one at the very end. And I'm just looking at the door that's open.
Sure.
You could have like a second room going into the back there.
Mm-hmm.
And just take out part of that stage. And I think that would give us enough room because the floor system goes probably up to that speaker on the side of the curtain there, okay? Where you could have a small office set in, like a two-room office in that, in that one area, okay? I mean, there's things that we can do that don't cost a lot of money.
Right.
But when you start taking and completely re-taking out the assessors, which is a nice room. Okay, you don't really want to take that out.
We don't have the money to.
Because it costs too much money.
Yeah, I know, it costs too much money.
So, and that's the same as the bathrooms. You want to keep the plumbing over the other plumbing or next to the other plumings because of the cost.
Absolutely, absolutely. But we, you know, I've.
And you didn't know that at the time when you were doing this.
But, you know, I just, I have talked to, I've run all this by the building inspector. And he told me we need, we're gonna have to have two bathrooms.
One downstairs and one upstairs, or two right here?
No, two on this floor. We're gonna need two on this floor.
Okay. The other option is to put two bathrooms right out the end there, okay? Go through that door, and that way, we can take and put a pipe going right out to the street and have a separate exit to the sewer. Instead of running it down through and chopping up all the floors, we talked about an addition on the far end. We could put two bathrooms right out here, right next to the stage, and that would comply with it.
Yep.
And you run the line right outside.
As long as they go somewhere.
Yeah, okay. I mean, I'm just looking at the, the cost effectiveness on this whole thing.
So, I think what I'm hearing is that everybody is in agreement that it's essentially three additional offices, a meeting room, and the bathrooms, however they end up being configured. And that the important thing is to agree that you all agree, those are the pieces that you need, and that you want to put this on the fast track so that you can have these office spaces ready by.
By April.
April, say, first of April. So, I think you have to make a decision here in, you know, hand this to Paul, and this is Paul's thing, or you hand this to Phil, and this is Phil's thing. I'm hearing Ed say something like, maybe you don't need to hire a new architect. I'm not quite sure I understood that correctly.
Well, we have an architect that's already working with for the Town Hall.
Ziggy, whatever his name is.
You don't really want to hire another person to, when he's already working on it.
So, literally.
I have no idea where we are with that, Ed. No idea.
Okay.
My, my, my opinion, I don't think we have them under contract. My opinion is we put out an RFQ and see what we get.
Because, you know, maybe I'm being very, we're not looking for a lot in here.
No.
I mean, I know that Jim Reedy built that.
I hate to spend $30,000 for something that's, we could use somewhere else.
Right. I mean, Jim Reedy built that office with $9,000 in assistance, but I don't know if you need a, do you have to do a full-scale architectural plan for, for what you're talking about doing here? You're not, you're not dealing with the integrity of the building, I guess I'm trying to say.
No, I know, I think what we're, you know, what we're talking about here is pretty simple. It's pretty simple, but we do need architectural plans.
Yes. But do we have to do a full-fledged solicitation, or is the?
I think that's the way to do it, yeah.
Is the cost minimal enough, though, to have that done, and it's not gonna take a huge chunk of?
Yeah, that's not a big, that's not a big expense.
So, I would just think you need to keep in mind, if you all agree on the items that are gonna be in it and a timeframe, then you need to make the decision, who's gonna be in charge, and you're gonna proceed. Because otherwise, it should never be done for April.
Here's a plan. Why don't we hire a carpenter?
Just go ahead and do it.
Put him on a tom payroll, okay? He can do that project out back here, maybe for what we want. Have him do this Town Hall. We pay, we don't have to pay him the big.
Prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage, other than his benefits. Why not? You've got probably eight years' worth of work right here.
No, it might be done April.
Well, no, but I mean.
It's a full-time temporary job.
Within the two buildings.
I.
I mean, it's just something to think about.
I have a process suggestion. I think we've outlined some ideas for Paul to, and I think we have some general agreement. Ed has some views about maybe where the meeting room, which side goes on, that's, you know, we can work that. But we have the general ideas to the way ahead in terms of the elements of what we're trying to do here, and what the planning premises are. Hand it over to Phil and Paul to go work and do another cut at this and come back to us with a more specific proposal, and let them think through how we go forward from here. Whether we go with the RFQ or use the, just, I don't even know, I don't know what kind of contractual arrangement, if any, we have with the architect you're talking about, but.
We have no contractual arrangement, as far as I know.
So, why not just do RFQ now?
I don't know how Phil hired Ziggy. I have no idea.
Why doesn't he just put out the request now?
No.
Well, we want to make sure Phil comes back, just in case, okay?
That's Monday. He'll be back Monday. But if you give Paul the authorization to oversee this and move ahead, then you're not gonna lose how many other weeks between, before your next meeting to solicit proposals. You might not like any of them, and you could reject them. But at least you wouldn't lose the next two weeks, which probably puts you into Labor Day, so you're probably not gonna meet for three weeks.
Okay. The proposal would be what, Paul? Just to have somebody come in and design this?
Yes, yeah. So, so, you know.
Why, why wouldn't you take somebody like Mark Schlot? He's gonna charge you a couple thousand dollars. He would lay out exactly what you have here, add on the two offices, add on whatever you need for a meeting room down there, and a floor plan, just like he did next door, and it's done. Why do you want to put a request for?
If we, if we did a request for qualifications, I would certainly hope that Mark would.
He'd respond.
Would respond.
He's just trying to keep us legal from a contractual point of view.
Is it four weeks you have to put the notice out, or?
Yeah, yeah.
It's under $10,000, so you can just get a couple of estimates and go from there.
I don't know enough about the bidding law when it comes to construction.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would feel much better about it advertising.
Okay, whatever.
But you should decide whether you're going to give Paul a go-ahead.
Well, I think we should bring that up at our next meeting when Phil's back. Can move forward on, well, if you can get an answer from Phil, if he's got some kind of contractual agreement or however, Ziggy might have it all done. I have no idea.
But Paul can make that determination if Phil's Monday.
It's a problem. We have no idea what's going on.
Right. And advertise on Tuesday if he's in a position to do it, instead of waiting for your next meeting.
Anybody want to make a motion to have, sorry. When you retire, you can take this job.
No, thank you.
Do you want to make a motion to have Paul sit out on IRP, or do you want to wait until next meeting? We could have a meeting, if you'd like, next Tuesday. I don't have trouble with that.
I think we should be clear on what we want first, before we have anybody draw up anything.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Because there, again, this is not clear. No offense, Paul. It's not clear.
It's not meant to be. No, it's just a, no, it's just a.
Because, I mean, we talked originally about having the TV studio in where your office was, and then put all the electronics, all the computers and stuff in.
Yeah, I don't see a TV studio happening. Nor do I see the need for one. We don't have the money for it, and I don't, I don't think we need one.
What do you mean? I thought we were, I thought that was all part of the deal with the cable TV company, table, TV people.
Would you, would you like to address that?
Uh, not at the moment.
Not at the moment, okay.
I thought that was, Jeff, is that your understanding when we had this whole contractual thing with Comcast?
We have no contract as yet.
We don't have a contract yet.
But that was put in, put in the agreement, that we, that's part of the money would be for setting up.
Part of the money would be for setting up the studio.
Do you have the room to set it up?
Yeah, we don't have the room for it, period.
Is there, is there a room on that floor?
No.
Well, the, the original plan that we talked about before Paul was here.
Well, I thought we just agreed that we're gonna put in two bathrooms, one meeting room, and three offices. I thought that was what we agreed to. I don't, I didn't hear anybody talking about a TV studio.
And a drop ceiling.
In our original plan, it included a TV studio because there was nothing, Paul's room was already, so that, that would have been the studio and moved all the computer equipment in there. And then, that would have been the TV room at the same time.
I wasn't involved with any of that.
No, you weren't. I'm just letting you know. That's what was talked about. And then, Phil's office would have been removed, and then, the, the meeting room would have been, from Phil's office out to here, and then, another office after that.
Louise.
Those are all items that were included in the $5 million renovation that was defeated, and you have very limited funds to do what you're going to do. And I, again, will say, I think you need to decide what the priorities are for the departments that are here full-time, trying to do their jobs, and they need workspaces. And if we need a TV studio down the road, then maybe that's something that goes in the stage area. But right now, you have needs for departments that are here on a full-time basis that need working spaces. And, and the three offices, the meeting room and the handicap bathrooms, gets that piece of it done for your full-time people. Things like moving the studio maybe are important, but for day-to-day functioning right now, that could be delayed and be part of an additional project that goes in the stage area or somewhere else.
It's part of the room that we had already planned here. The data room was gonna be shared with the TV equipment, and that was gonna be it. It was, you already have the room there.
Well, we, we.
You know?
Let's start with, let's start with the office space. We definitely, oh, we need office space, right? And we need a meeting area for us. Yeah, I mean, now that.
Two ADA compliant bathrooms, the office for the treasurer, the collector, town accountants. The accountant's room becomes a machine room, a meeting room, drop ceiling. Consider using the ramp money, what was originally all dedicated to the ramp, also for the bathrooms. Deferring the ramp activity for now on. Continue to pursue the elevator, which is on a separate track. And have Paul and Phil, have Paul go ahead out with a RFQ for, it doesn't limit, doesn't bind us to anything.
Does not bind us to anything.
To get, see who's interested in serving as a designer for us, architect, any services.
Is that a motion?
Okay.
No, I'm just, I want to make sure, no.
I feel like I've repeated myself about five times.
Well, your motion includes the three offices, the meeting room.
Yes, bathrooms, meeting rooms, machine room. The elevator's already on its off, separate track.
Right. But it's just a matter of how we're gonna shift things around. That's what we have to agree.
And where we build it out, what we build out and where.
And what, it's the estimated cost, basically. So, I mean, if we, if we come way under, we can look at possibly doing something in one of these other rooms off of the stage.
Like the bathroom, or something like that. Okay, I'll second that.
Okay. Motion made, second. Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go to town.
We're glad you're here.
But keep working with, when Phil comes back, by the way, Phil is on vacation. He'll be back next week, so.
This is a thing going on for a couple of years.
Oh, I know.
It's just time to knock it down and lay it down. That's where we're headed, so.
Yeah, I, I want to get this thing moving. It's, you know, it's been languishing.
They just don't want to see us waste money and do something that we have to rip apart later. That would, that's the disturbing part.
Yep. All right.
We already talked about.
The ambulance.
We're under old business.
Old business.
Couple things under old business. Center School Working Group Charter?
Uh, yes.
With the Housing Authority?
John, John Wilks and I have been trading emails.
Okay, so, so that's.
It's, yeah, and my, my latest email from him was, "I'll stop in to see you this week sometime."
Okay. Ambulance hardship criteria?
The.
Ambulance abatement hardship criteria?
Yeah, I, I've started looking into that, but I don't have anything right now.
We've changed the police contract.
Yep.
Performance reports. We, we've had the session, the training session. We really need to now kick this off in a couple ways. One, close on what form we're going to use, except for DPW, which we've agreed through the union to use the format that they suggested, which is a little different, but it's fine. They're, they're happy with it. We need to close on the form, and we need to close on a schedule, and we need to close on, I believe, the objectives for all our direct reports. And, you know, we're. Seem to be. All right. You know, I have a preference to start something, you go through and finish it. And, but we're drifting here. We're, so, we need to lock this down. And I would propose that by our next meeting, we.
I have a suggestion.
Close on all the, close on the form, close on the schedule, and close on all the objectives for Board of Selectmen's direct reports.
I have a suggestion. Perhaps you and I should get together.
Okay, that's fine. Be glad to.
And, and try and nail things down.
I'd be glad to.
Okay.
I don't know, I could go on forever. Go ahead.
I've got one thing here. I got an email from Cindy. Northampton's looking for some information from Phil. I guess a list of equipment here and what's preparing for the dam, the meeting that they had up in Northampton. And she still hasn't gotten anything from Phil, and they need that. They needed it by August 17th, and it's gotta be submitted to the state by the 27th. So, we really need to get on Phil to get this thing out there and get it done because she's been requesting it right along here and not getting any headway with Phil, so. I don't know, if you want to talk to Phil and get that taken care of, if you want to take things with him.
Yep.
But, you know, back, back up to that. We never signed any agreement with Northampton or anyone else.
No, they're trying to, I guess, put all the information together of who has equipment and what towns are available, so we can go under the mutual aid system and so on.
Okay.
Yeah. That's what she's trying to establish, and submit that to the state.
That shouldn't, that shouldn't be very difficult.
To get it out there. We should have that automatically.
One loader, one backhoe. What exactly are they looking for?
It's for.
A road grader.
Yeah.
Done.
Like equipment that we have. We have chainsaws, we have how many sandbags we have in place. How many, what do we have? We have a bucket loader, we have a backhoe that we can get out there. We've got five trucks, we've got whatever.
I would, I would have a list of all the vehicles, but I, I wouldn't have a list of all the equipment. Eventually.
You know.
You should have a list of all the equipment.
Yeah, there should be a property account.
There should be a whole property account right in your office.
So, we just, it's a matter of just getting it to her, that's all it means. And she's, she's been after Phil to.
I wasn't aware of it.
Yeah.
Janet's the liaison, so.
So, if you could get on him to get that out Monday, whenever he comes back. So if you could get on him to get that out Monday, whenever he comes back.
All right. Next is the Cable Advisory Committee Business Plan. Pat, would you like to come up here?
I'm sorry?
You're at the spot.
I didn't even know about this.
Yeah, well, um-
Well, it's un, un-
I, I-
It's old business.
Yeah, it's actually old business, so.
I can see what's listed, I suppose, but I came because I knew about the historical part, because I was informed-
I put this on the agenda.
I'm sorry?
Because my last meeting with the Cable Advisory Committee, they were anxious for the Board of Selectmen to sign off on the CAC Business Plan. So I put it in the packet, but since doing so, had some conversations with Selectmen Boyle and our interim station manager, and we've come to the conclusion that some modifications are, are probably required. So I would suggest that we table this conversation right now.
All right. Okay, can you work with the Cable and Advisory Committee on that? They're going to be, Paul will be getting ahold of you, Pat, to have your committee come in. They want to make some revisions on the, on the plan.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Hopefully, hopefully we'll-
Are these revisions that have already been set, that you said that you want to do without the advisory board know anything about it?
No.
We'll, this, this conversation just happened yesterday, so you will be, you will be involved-
Okay.
-without a doubt. Before, before we bring it to the board, I'm going to want the CAC to look at it.
Okay, all right. I can't do anything this week, and I'll be gone until Monday, so when do you suggest that we get together?
The next meeting is what, in two weeks?
Two, two weeks, yeah.
When's the next meeting, in two weeks?
Yeah.
So anytime next week, but this, this week is, I'm right out straight.
Well, once, once, you know, we, we think it needs to be looked at, we think, we think there probably needs to be some changes to it. We'll put a draft together and, and get it out to everybody, and then set up a meeting to talk about it.
Well, I'm getting a little concerned about Comcast. I, I've heard from the lawyer, but I have not got any kind of accomplishment, accomplishments done as far as Comcast is concerned. Comcast lawyer was on vacation, then our lawyer was on vacation, and I guess apparently nothing gets done by anyone else. So I have been in contact with our lawyer, I have also emailed him and asked that he email all of us what actually is going on. When he talks on the phone and leaves a message, it is so garbled that I, I really can't understand. And I, as I explained to him, I am, yes, the chair of the board, but I am the member with the least knowledge on here, and I need to have the input of the other board members and, and also you, Paul. So I asked him to email us, and I have not heard anything.
I actually spoke with him yesterday.
Yeah.
And I guess there's, there's basically what's been going on, and it hasn't been too much from what I can understand. He, I know, he's been on vacation again.
Yeah.
But there has been some, been some back and forth between he and Comcast. There's been some minor revisions made, which he said he was going to get to me. Actually, he said he was going to, he was going to send it to me yesterday, but I have yet to receive it.
Well, you know, the, one big thing that they're talking about is having a hookup with the library. And I said at this time, why do we need this? Why, why do we need to do this? I don't know who had proposed this before I was involved with it. And is this something that we really need to do? Because he's talking about it's going to have to be some of this at the cost of the town. And-
Well, there's a, there's an initiative called Broad, Mass Broadband.
Okay.
And essentially runs down 91, and then little spokes come off, and it's, there are hookups for internet hookups, high-speed internet hookups coming into the town, all the public buildings, the town hall, the library, schools, we're not paying for that, that's-
Okay, not the way he was kind of explaining it to me on the phone. He said, because it has to be done like in a certain amount of time after, I believe, the contract is signed. And if it isn't done during that time, then Hatfield has to do some of the, have, board some of that cost.
I, I don't know what you're talking about.
That's what I am trying to, you know, that's why I said I wanted to-
When the first contract came, it included all town buildings, schools, library, town hall, that we, they would hook us up for free, that was all part of the package.
Mm-hmm.
So now they must be pulling back out of the library part, saying that it's, could be a separate-
Well, we can, but their way, I mean, it's going to be, as I said, what I could understand is we would have, once a contract is signed, we would only have so much time that that would be put in, and then it would have to be at the cost of the town. And I'm, I'm saying, why? I thought this was all what was set up in the beginning, but I wasn't sure, because I said, I'm not in on all the things.
What are they putting in?
I'm sorry?
What are they going to put in?
What are they going to?
Put in at the library.
Cable TV?
Cable TV.
They should have it arranged from the last contract.
It's there, yeah.
It's there, but this is all the new line that's going through.
Yeah, but I don't think-
I guess I don't know.
Comcast doesn't have control of the new, the high-
No. High-speed option.
Then I don't know, I, I really don't know.
I mean, the most that you can say in the contract is, once this-
High-speed cable option.
-comes through, Comcast can withdraw their, their, their line from the municipal buildings.
I don't know.
There's a program from Comcast called Libraries Connected, where libraries are connected for free. And if our library hadn't taken advantage of that, which I, I took it with them 10 years ago, they'd have been passing out one for the past 10 years.
I hope they took advantage of that and not paying for it.
Maybe that's what he, I don't know, I, but it's-
Three high-speed internet.
What did he have to, Bill, say to you, anything? Or was it just email?
No, I spoke to him briefly, yeah.
Yeah.
We just spoke about the status, basically. And one thing we did speak about was, you know, they're having a hard time, you know, about a third channel, and I said, forget the third channel.
Forget it.
We don't need a third channel.
Forget it.
I'm not sure if we even need a second channel, but we definitely don't need a third channel.
I think the second channel would be good.
Yeah, I think we do need a second channel.
I think we need the second channel, third channel, I-
No.
You know, that's something I can-
That was one of the things we were talking about here in the business plan.
Okay.
How many channels we actually really need.
Well, why don't you work with Paul on that?
Yes.
Ma'am?
Yep.
Set up a date and time when you guys can meet and come back at next meeting with revisions.
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Pat.
Did I get candy this time?
Sure, here you go. Those are good.
Thank you.
No.
Soon as I, soon as I get something, yeah, okay.
And I'll get all of the others.
Okay.
All right, I guess. Any unanticipated new business that-
Vacant positions here, Jan, I'll bring those up.
Right here.
Yep. On the one Emergency Management Planning Committee, we're, emergency management, we're in contact with Carol Keller, she's a nurse, and she worked closely with Sue Dawn. She worked at Coridicus Hospital, and we're seeing if she would be interested in taking over Sue's portion on the emergency management.
Right.
So, but then Sue was also on the library, so we have to replace, find another replacement from there at the library.
Have we advertised these, what we're talking about here is vacant committee positions, one on the library building committee and another on Emergency Management Planning Committee, Board of Health rep.
No, nothing's, nothing's happened thus far that I'm aware of.
There are Channel 15, so they're out there, folks are interested, please indicate their interest to Town Administrator. You all saw this thing about the 350th anniversary? Are we responding individually, collectively? This is Hampshire County, the invitation-
Right, right.
-to Selectmen and city councilors and mayors for the Hampshire County 350th Anniversary Celebration. September 14th at the old courthouse.
I'm al, I'm already in there, I put my, I'm going to be there.
All right, so we're, we're responding individually?
Well, I responded because I was at the meeting, and I'm part of the Hampshire County Select Person, or Select Avoidance Association present. I told them I'd be there, so I don't know if you guys are going to be there.
I, I will.
Okay.
Yeah, probably.
We have this note from the- Town Clerk regarding warrant articles.
I did, I did read that, yep. That the Attorney General's office with a note that, they said the law already, already is there, set forth in, with what we tried to do in adopting-
Yeah, that, that, the law has been approved, but it points out some shortcomings.
Who's responsible for posting? Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40, Section 3, says they have to be posted.
That's the Town Clerk.
Town Clerk, okay, so that's not our action, that's not her. I, I, there's, there's a couple of things here. One, pointed out some shortcomings that we could address in an amendment next year. But, but for now, I would move that the Board of Selectmen direct the fire department to implement Article 32 consistent with the requirements of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section B. So, one, we passed the bylaw, Attorney General says what we've done is okay. They pointed out some clarifications needed as to who does what.
Right.
Conflicts with the law.
Well, no, it just doesn't, it doesn't conflict, it just, it's just, it doesn't cover a couple of things that Attorney General said it should be covered. So I'm, I'm just suggesting that we make the motion to direct the fire chief to implement the article consistent with the requirements of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 13, which is what the Attorney General is saying, that we clean up next year.
I don't have a problem with that, I'll second that.
Motion made, seconded, Paul in favor?
And then, and then, second motion, I moved that Article 32 be amended at the next annual town meeting, consistent with Chapter 38, Section 13.
Second that motion.
To clean it up.
Motion made, seconded, Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll get a copy of Bill on that.
Anything else?
Paul, you'll get Bill a clean copy of that?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep. I'm pretty sure he's got a copy already, actually, but I'll double-check.
Which one do you want next?
And I hate to read and raise it, but garage status?
Well, I, I know nothing.
Phil to come back, okay, is that where it is?
The what?
Garage.
Garage.
And back here?
Yes.
Right now, we're waiting for Timmy Pachork, he's just about all done with his electrical plan in there, and then we get it to Mark, and Mark will come back with the original plan, and then Phil will be back by then, and Phil can put it out for estimate and bidding.
Okay. I'm in.
Did you see this, Jan? This was for municipal, mass municipal associations, where they invite the sixth grade students, participate in a statewide essay contest. If I were elected leader of your community, I would make a difference by, and the schools can participate if you want to sign this, supporting that. I signed it last year, and that would give them a chance to get, to get into the mass municipal associations program.
That's one for-
And pass it on to John and Robert. It just gives the kids a chance to come up with an essay and-
Wait for you to sign it.
Yeah. Oh, by the way, I got a check in the mail from our Waste Management. I gave it to Louis to put in the bank, but I left a copy for Phil, I don't know why it came to me, but.
You're the chairman.
So just somewhere I had, $2,840.59 was a check, that's for our recycled material that goes up to transfer station. Includes our plastic, glass, and paper, so we are making money on the deal.
I'd like to just bring up one thing, and maybe it's something for Phil down the road. I know there's, on the transfer station, the cardboards and things that we make money on, we weren't charging people, they didn't have to get a dump sticker to bring this stuff in, they could just drop the stuff off.
I didn't even know that.
Okay, and then all of a sudden, things change, and I'm not quite sure why they changed. So I think we need to look into that, because if we're making money on it, somebody-
You mean a dump permit? You're talking a dump permit?
A dump permit, right, okay. So if you have cardboard, like people have a lot of cardboard, and they just like to bring it up and, and put it at the transfer station, but they don't, they have a dumpster on their property. So this would give us extra money, so they'd just drop it off, and there was no charge for that on the recyclable stuff.
Done.
So I don't know if Phil changed that, or whatever, but I got wind that there's been some changes and-
I'm not sure everyone knows it.
Okay.
Probably, that's the key.
We may just want to talk about it with him at our next meeting or something like that, clarify that for the public.
All right, I guess that covers it. I don't believe we have anything to go into an executive session over, so.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jan.